Pledge of Allegiance, this is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those of you who are on the phone need to know that there's a significant delay in your speaking, so just FYI, we finished the pledge a little bit ahead, just so you know.
I've always been kind of slow here.
No, you haven't, Chris. So, Chris Beeson is on the phone, correct?
Correct.
Beth Leisure is on the phone?
Yes.
And Bob Chamnis is on the phone?
That is correct, sir.
All right. Anyone else on the phone? All right, let's get started. First thing up is the commissioners' comments, and again, for those of you who are on the phone, I would ask if you wouldn't please mute your phone in between your comments, just remember then to unmute it when you want to make a comment. Mr. Poust, welcome.
Okay, thank you very much, President Plaster. I think we're all a good distance apart. Normally, I would wear my mask all the time, but we have several things to go through here this evening, and I keep fogging up through my glasses, so I can't read my notes. So, for a short period of time, I'm going to take this off, which I shouldn't do, but I will, because I try and set a good example and wear it all the time. So, we'll see where we are. It's been a very busy time in here with Steve and I and the folks, as we've been working with the COVID-19 and everything that's been transpiring in the last week. So, if you'll bear with me, if I forget, I got a lot of stuff, I'll try and find what we need to chat about. But first, let me bring you up to date on the projects that we have going on at the moment, and of course, the courthouse havoc is we're continuing to work on the punch list. Now, I have a couple of bills here for some work that we need to do over there yet, so we're still working on that. On the jail bond project, that's continuing to move slowly, as many of the subcontractors have not been working, so they have not been here because of COVID-19. The light, the LED lighting is all in Mexico, and so we're not able to get that through the border at this time, so that's held that whole phase of that project up on the lighting. We don't have any idea at this time how soon we'll be able to get those in, so it's a question of just waiting now until some of the supplies get here that we can continue on in the jail. But we are moving along, and we're still not too far off of the schedule that we're working with. Now, we're beginning to work on the day rooms, so we've starting on those, and so that's coming along quite well at the moment. Fortunately, the jail population is down some, so we're able to work within the pods, so that's worked out very well for us. On the jail and the courthouse security equipment, I'll talk to you a little later on that. On the Guardian at Lightem, the folks were in back to work on the vending machines, so they were over, and we have the vending machines out of the lounge area moved to the new location, so that's coming right along. We've also met with one of our vendors to look at how we're going to petition that particular area in there, to make that into a lounge area, give some privacy on there for folks to come down, want to eat their lunch there in the future, when we don't have to be spread quite so far apart. But as you know, we're putting that on the first floor in the courthouse, in the back area by the entrance to the prosecutor's office is where that's going to be. On the permitting, we haven't talked to you recently about the permitting on there. Our kickoff meeting starts, this project starts this Friday, so that is moving right along, pretty much on the schedule that we were on, so we're pleased with that. We still hope to have that all in place yet this year to begin doing the permitting electronically. So, we really do appreciate the funding that you've allocated us on that, to be able to move that project forward. Let's go back to the security project. Commissioners did today approve this project based on the fact that council would appropriate adequate funding for this project. I believe you all have received earlier from Steve the breakdown on the individual bids. We had three companies that bid on the project, and the low bid was Security Automation Systems Incorporated, and that bid was, well, total would be $1,574,156, all total, which includes some projects that were not payable by the bond issue. I handed out an update sheet to you here this evening. If you look on the far right-hand side where the red is, right now, we estimate that is the amount $431,708.30 that would not be paid for by the bond issue. And you know, we talked about that earlier on, and Ron has worked very closely with us to make sure that we complied with the bond issue, and that everything that could be paid for out of the bond issue would be, but we knew ahead of time, which we've explained to you before, that we would need additional funding to be able to complete this total project. Now, as you know, this isn't just a luxury project that we're doing, saying, oh, let's do this, that the equipment that we had was failing, and that the security system was not up to par that it should be, and so it was necessary for us to do this. And if you recall, we've had meetings throughout about the last year and a half on this to discuss this. We had a special committee, Denny Burns headed up, and Steve worked with, of about 12 people that worked on all the different security, and what we needed, what we didn't need, and for example, on the cameras that we have, we didn't go with the highest camera, we went in the middle range on the cameras that we put in, but the new technologies will make it far superior to what we have had in the past. So, if you'll recall, we'd estimated that this was going to be about a 1.4 million project, and as you can see, we're close to that. We're not right at 1.4, but we're a little bit over the 1.5. So, all in all, we pretty much came in to right on schedule and right on cost of what we had anticipated that it was going to be. So, what I would be asking for tonight is for your consideration of the additional funding that would be necessary so that we can complete the project. That would include, if we did that, that would include the alternates. We had the four alternates, which were the warranty on the project, and if you'll recall, we've been paying, where should I say, about $18,000, I think, or a little bit more a month.
A year.
Was that a year?
Yes.
Okay, for kind of maintenance on that. So, when you look at what they were charging on there for all the new equipment on there, we'll save some money a little. Well, we won't save, we're still paying, but it'll kind of help reduce those costs. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. If you get into the actual security, then you're beyond me as to what all they're doing on there, but I know they've worked extremely hard. Commissioner Burns has worked with that, and especially Steve. I think Steve has had everybody that possibly could be involved. We've had meetings at the jail, we've had meetings with all the judges, we have commissioners and council people have been in those meetings, plus the subcommittee they had that worked on all of this to bring this to where we are today.
So, the cost of the warranty service agreements is the $83,394?
That's correct.
Okay, and none of that is payable out of the jail bond fund, correct, Ron?
The warranty is not payable out of jail bond.
The warranty and service agreement.
Right.
So, the total you're asking us to find resources for is $431,000, which is not dramatically more than we were anticipating. If you recall, I think we were thinking in terms of 25% of the project might be, not be able to be funded out of the jail bond fund, so it's in that range. Let me hear from you. What do you think?
Kenny?
Chris, you have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Of course, the three of us don't have the sheet there, but with that on it, of course, that new figure, what's that replace on our existing sheet? The part that's not covered by the bond?
It doesn't replace anything it was added to. So, I think on your sheet, it says $346,314, and then it's an additional $83,394, which brings the total to $431.
Right.
Correct.
I got you. That's it. Thank you.
I would have to say that knowing the system that is being put in here, and the four buildings that have been added to, when we first started, we talked about just the jail being upgraded, but looking at the courthouse, the same system, integrating all of our sites onto one system, I know for a fact, because I'm doing the exact same thing in the school district I'm in now, and the dollars and the system that is going in here is very much needed, number one, and two, it's an excellent system, and for the four buildings and the areas that are being covered, this is a very good cost that we are looking at to have these four buildings serviced.
And we're able to monitor the entire system from the jail?
Yes, yes.
Exactly.
Which is important. Any other questions, comments?
We'll just have to agree with Roger, I think we need to move forward with this for the security of all our employees and the public that comes in here, too, so.
We do not have this much money appropriated, so we'll have to look at an additional appropriation, so it's not something that we can take care of tonight. And Tony, if you want the finance committee to have a discussion on this at the June 3 meeting, do you want to go ahead and advertise an additional appropriation, or do you want to wait until the finance committee has a chance to look at it? And what's the effect of that?
What's the latest deadline, Ron? Because we have to get it under contract.
We need to have it under contract.
But can it be under contract with that phrasing?
With the non-appropriation clause?
Correct.
Yeah, it can be. If we could, I'd like to do it without that, because you know you've got to appropriate the jail fund bonds and jail bond funds, so it's just a matter of looking at your crystal ball, figuring out where you're going to get that $431,000.
Okay. Is everybody okay with going ahead and advertising additional appropriations, and we can put together, what, too late?
You're too late for the June meeting.
Well, or we could have a special meeting.
Ron, when do we have to?
Well, there is a, and I think Kim's aware, she and I are on the mailing list, there's been relief afforded due to the COVID-19, to where expenditures can be made, commitments for expenditures can be made, even though the actual appropriation process may lag down.
Oh, really?
Correct.
So, I think, you know, I don't think anything in rolling is required. If we can do it by workshop in June, that would be fine.
Okay.
I want to make sure we have a contract. The contracts are being prepared, and I'll just add that not.
Hold on a second, Chris. Okay, so Ron is saying that there are some changes to the statutory requirements because of the COVID situation, but in his opinion, we can wait until the workshop to actually do an additional appropriation?
In June, yeah.
In June. And if, for whatever reason, you feel like we need to have a special meeting, please let us know, and we will entertain that.
My main concern was to get it under contract, so there wouldn't be any complication on that.
That's been our main concern as well, so.
If we can do that, we can have, the contract's been awarded, so it's just a matter of getting the contract prepared and executed. You'll have a non-appropriation clause in it until you make the appropriation, at which time we can do an addendum to the contract.
To take it out.
Appropriation clause, not should we get the contract ready, Harper?
Okay. All right, so that's what we'll, we'll have it on the finance committee meeting for June 3, and we will work towards the final appropriation of $431,708.30 at our workshop in June, which would be on the 17th, I believe. Okay.
One question on that.
Yes.
On the warranty, do we have to pay the warranty upfront?
That is my understanding.
I don't know the answer to that.
We'll have to look at the contract and see what it says.
It may be a multiple year, too.
If we pay it on an annual basis, then we wouldn't have to appropriate all of that money at once, so we'll have some answers to that for the June 3 meeting, and we can discuss that in finance.
I would like to say we don't have to, because that's really not appropriate.
Paying it in advance?
For it is prepayment for services, so.
Okay.
Try to give us some talking points if that might be. But I would like.
Okay, we'll find out, yeah.
Good question, Tony. Thank you. All right.
Okay, next.
Move on, Chris.
Yep, I got more.
Okay, Ken.
Okay. Next item up is the courthouse and the project. As you well know, we've been moving along on that project. However, we have an additional.
You're talking about the HVAC?
Yeah, the HVAC system over there. Everything is done. As I said, they're doing the punch list, but we had an additional expense we needed to do. We had, in putting everything in place, we had three of our smoke detectors and fire alarm systems that are actually inside the ducts that did not work, so we had no choice but to replace those, and so we have an additional expense of $7,237 that we're going to need for that. And so that's that, then I'll go into one more for that project, so maybe we can take all this at one time, and then we'll discuss it. The cooling tower that is on the backside that works with this whole program, as we got that cooling tower in place and we looked at it, there was no security to keep somebody from climbing up the ladder that's on this particular tower and getting up to the top of it, and on the top side, you have these big fans that are up there. So, what we want to do, we got a, had Cooley Mechanical come in, and we want to install a ladder guard on the backside. If you recall, that cooling tower sits in that, on the backside in that little cutout that's in there, and it's right by where they bring prisoners into that section. So, we want to put a guard on the ladder that's back there and everything, and the cost to do that's $845, so somebody can't climb up into there and destroy something that would cost us far more than that. So, those are two additional expenses that Steve has given to me that they would like to do, the one we've already done on the smoke detector, we didn't have a choice, we knew we had to get that done. So, we need additional funding on those two projects.
And that ladder is not a part of the HVAC contract?
It can't be? It was not part of the contract.
It can't be a change order?
Well, it could. We still need the $845.
There's no contingency in the contract?
I thought there was. I thought there was a significant contingency, a 10% or?
If it hadn't already been used.
Well, that's the issue.
I don't know, Ron. I don't know the answer to that, if it's already been used or not.
Yeah, it should have someday.
So, the.
I can try and find out real quick.
The $7,200 for the sensors in the ductwork is a separate contract with Corson, and Steve told me he did that as a separate contract to save 10%.
Do you know on the cooling tower, if the contingency money has been used already?
The general contractor would.
Overhit.
Bump the price by 10%. So, that's why it's not a part of the.
You're not sure?
Of the actual, the original contract as a change order.
Okay, that's all I need for right now. Okay, all right, thanks.
So, what's your pleasure? There is still money available in council contingency, if you want to do that, and with the $800, we're talking about a total of around $8,000 to do those, but.
I would move to approve both of those. One is a have-to item. I think there's no option in the duck detectors for the fire alarm system. The other one's a safety issue, so.
Call second, Rogers.
Thank you, Chris.
That's subject to there not being any available unused contingency, it's already appropriated.
I called Steve, he couldn't remember. He goes, ah.
I bet it is gone.
Yeah, we'll check that and find out, yeah.
All right, any further discussion? And did you specify where that was to come from?
No. You want to? Contingency would be fine.
Chris, are you okay with that coming from contingency in your second?
Yes, if we're still pretty healthy there.
Well, we can afford $8,000.
Okay.
Probably depends on your definition of pretty healthy.
We don't have to get into the original.
Not yet, no.
Not yet.
All right, so there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Let me go through the roll call vote. Mr. Beeson?
Aye.
Mr. Chamnis?
Aye.
Mr. Gillum?
Aye.
Mrs. Leisure?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Plaster says aye. Motion carries unanimously. Ken?
Okay, next item. Today, the commissioners agreed to contract with Burroughs Consulting Incorporated, which is a lady that works with the health department, and she's going to work with us, and the program income that we have, and the $2 million that all of you are aware of, that we have in a bank account, and so she's going to be in in June to work, June 10th?
June 10th.
To work with Kimberly on that, and she has worked with Reed Hospital and all there, and this will be to assist us in closing out many of the things that we need to do, and specifically on that fund.
Actually, the grant needs to be closed out, and there's a specific process to double that, and this will be one of the items, the $2 million in the Health Center Fund, Program Income Fund, I believe we call it. And will that, Ron, be able to be paid from the program income account, or the grant account?
I think the grant itself includes funds to close out expenses. That was at least what was suggested by Ursa on our last conference call. I don't know that we have ever seen the detailed budget of the.
No, not yet. Have you seen?
I've not seen the detailed budget, but Ron, I agree with Ron that that was what was suggested from Ursa, that we include the consultant cost for the closeout in the grant.
Certainly, if not, then program income would be appropriate.
Okay, so it's not a cost that's going to come out of the general fund, it will come out of one or the other of the Health Center Funds, or the Grant Fund, or the Program.
And there will be other related expenses we'll want to look at, but not just this consultant's fee.
Okay. Any questions on hiring the consultant? If not, Kenneth, let's move on.
Okay. Excuse me. We have several COVID-19-related things that, and you do have that item, so what I'm going to do is kind of have the sheriff come on up on his bulletproof vest that he wants to talk about.
So, you've got everything down in your part, commissioners' comments?
Well, what I thought I would do is come back when we talk about the COVID-19-related expenditures, and I'll explain everything we've been doing and where we are at this time, and have good general discussion at that point.
That'll be fine. All right. Sheriff Redder, come on up. Kim's going to move away or put his mask back on, or both?
I will do that, yes.
And there is a, there's a little microphone laying on the podium that connects you to the people on the telephone, so please try to speak into that.
Thank you for seeing me this evening. I'd be happy to take my mask off, or if you can hear me better, if everybody's comfortable with the arrangements.
Whatever you're comfortable with.
If everybody can hear me, I'll be a little patriotic and just leave my mask on and show our colors.
You guys, he has a blue mask with white stars on it, so.
And the other side has got red and white stripes.
And the other side's red and white.
So, real quick, I have two items on my agenda. First, I'd like to present the council with our annual jail information report. I've already given this to the commissioners, and I'll leave it here instead of coming up to pass it out, and you can view it at your pleasure. There should be sufficient copies here for record and one for each of you.
Great, thank you.
The other item that I have is for some bulletproof vests.
Just leaving that, Ken, that's fine.
For the cost of bulletproof vests for our enforcement officers. We actually made a purchase of the ballistic vests for both our jail staff and for our enforcement officers. I went ahead and, as we previously agreed, to pay for our portion, for the jail, out of our misdemeanor account, and that was more than sufficient to take care of that. The enforcement division officers total, and forgive me, I didn't put my glasses on.
I understand.
Yeah. The total, total for this, and there are 10, 11 officers, including myself, the total for that is $9,520.28. Again, this is all eligible for the 50% reimbursement grant to the bulletproof vest grant, and we have more than sufficient funds available to us according to the last indication that we got from that grant source, so I'd be happy to pass this around if you'd like, or leave a copy for the council.
Leave a copy.
So, on the vests, what's the number that you're asking us to help you with?
The $9,520.28. And 28 cents. Correct.
And essentially, you've paid the same amount, or close to, out of misdemeanor fund, is that what you said?
I paid for the jail officers. It wasn't that amount. It was significantly less, it was under $2,000. So, but we, you know, I assume we're going to have more as the year goes on. We just deputize five new jail deputies, and each one of those.
They each need a fitted vest.
Correct.
So, $9,520 is for how many vests?
11.
11? And is this, you don't know how much turnover you're going to have, and obviously, a new officer needs their own vest that's fitted to them personally.
Correct.
But do we, will, can we have a guesstimate so that we can actually put a budget line in for them?
Yeah, I had actually done that, and I think I provided that earlier, so we can look back on the minutes and see if that's there.
Okay, and I'm thinking for the 2021 budget, if we can include that. And I know it's just going to be a guess, that those numbers can change, people decide to stay or decide to leave, or?
Right, right, and I recall the agreement that we had, and I believe that I gave. Right, right. And, and I recall the agreement that we had and I believe that I give an estimates for, I, I don't want to be guessing, but I, I think it was either three or five years that we'd given estimates on. I, I'd be more than happy to provide that information again.
Let's, let's dig that information back out
Sure.
In time for the, for the budget meetings in July.
Okay.
Great. What's your pleasure with this request for $9,520?
Got a question. You said reimbursable grant?
Yes.
50% reimbursable. Would that be $4,700 or the 90? We're still going to be out 90, $9,520? Or is part of that reimbursable?
Correct. So, the way that grant works is we are eligible for an allotment of money. When we make a purchase, we have to submit claims for the purchase amount and then they reimburse us up to, or at 50%, up to our maximum allowable amount. So, that'd be correct. Forty, whatever the math works out to, 4,700.
4,750.
So, half of this, half of this will come back to us?
Right. Correct.
Okay. So, we need to put out $9,520.28 and then we'll give half of that back up to the maximum allowable.
Correct.
What's your pleasure?
Jeff, I'd like to propose that we do this for Randy and the guys with the vests and have the money come from our contingency fund. And when we get the reimbursement for that portion, we'll go back into our contingency fund.
Okay. That's Mr. Chamnus with a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Call second.
Seconded by Mrs. Leisure. Tony had a question.
Okay. And Ron, the amount that comes back, we can turn around and put back into contingency at any time or?
That's the source of, or you're taking it, yes.
Okay. We don't have to wait until the end of the year. We can, we can do it at any time, right? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Could you repeat the motion? I have trouble hearing.
The motion is from Mr. Chamnus to pay $9,520.28 out of council contingency
Okay.
With the expectation that half of that money will be reimbursed by this grant that the sheriff has told us about.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll go through the roll call. Mr. Beeson, your vote?
Aye.
Mr. Chamnus?
Aye.
Mr. Gillum?
Aye.
Mrs. Leisure?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Plaster says aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Anything else, Sheriff?
I don't believe so.
Thank you very much for coming in. Appreciate it. All right, Mr. Poust.
Okay. All right, let's talk about COVID-19 and what has transpired in the, a week ago, we got an email and, let me do this so you can hear me. A week ago, we got an email from the state talking about the testing site that was located at the National Guard Army and that that site was being underutilized and the people were not going for testing and if we had another site that would be available. So, quickly looking at what we had available to us that we thought would work, we looked at the Elder Bearman site that was sitting there. It's right downtown. It's on all the bus systems. There's plenty of parking there and it's very visible. So, we sent the information back and got confirmation back on that site. And so, we moved very quickly to be able to move that site on a Saturday, which we did, and have it up and running on Monday of this week. So, a lot of coordination going on over the weekend, a lot of stuff that was shipped to my house, which I in turn was able to take into the stuff on Saturday. They shipped it overnight. And we were able to get the site up and running on Monday morning and, at Elder Bearman. Unfortunately, in, in the morning, the nurse that was scheduled to be there did not show up in the morning, but did arrive in the afternoon. And that young nurse was working a surgical team all evening over in Indianapolis and then was rushing over here to do testing in the afternoon. We've been averaging the last two days, 42 folks went through on Monday, 49 went through today. So, we're set up and what they want us to do is 135 tests a day. So, we have a ways to go yet. So, we keep telling folks in the viewing audience to call in, get an appointment. We're also working to try and get it to where we can have walk-ins. And they even have a sign up now that says walk-ins are available, but there's been some confusion early on as whether the walk-ins could do it. But we think we'll have it cleared up so that people, if you're interested, you feel that you might be in contact with somebody, that you can walk in. And we've even offered out of our public health department that we would staff it with somebody to assist them with the paperwork on the computer to get the folks registered so that they could get tested. I'm very happy with the site compared to what we did have. Nothing wrong with the Army. They provided a lot of space, but you had to kind of know where to go over there to go around the back and in a back door to get into the facility. This is very open and the inside of Elder, Elder Bearman is very bright. It's very cheerful. When you walk in, you think, oh my gosh, this is really nice. You wouldn't think of it as kind of a medical facility. So, I'm very pleased with what we've been able to do. Christine has done just an excellent job of working with them. We have big banners up on the outside of the south side of the Elder Bearman building talking about the fact that it's COVID-19 site. And then we have signs guiding them to the parking lots and everything. So, we're really working on that. And as you know, everybody was talking, testing, testing. I want to be tested. I want to be tested. Well, guys, this is free. It's free. It's free. All you got to do is go to Elder Bearman and you get tested for that. So, they have space available. I don't know how long they're going to continue to do this. I've asked that to try and do some planning because we had to work with Val to get the interns changed if we were going to have people in that facility. So, we added an additional expense for that, which will be reimbursed by a COVID-19 on that. So, we have the insurance covered for folks that were having into that facility. So, we, we got that done and, and that's in place and that's working. At the same time, Steve and I have been working as to planning to, what are our guidelines going to be when we open up for the folks coming back in? We've been looking at all the FEMA material that we've received. We've also gone into OSHA, looking at all the OSHA requirements that they have. We also were waiting for the Supreme Court to come down with their guidelines as to what was going to happen in the courts. That did come down yesterday. So, we have about 20 pages of guidelines from the Supreme Court. We have met with, briefly with the judges, Chuck Todd, Judge Todd, excuse me, I should say, Judge Todd is the ones that has been designated that we're coordinating with. And there are a lot of requirements that we're going to have to do and get in place when they go back to full operation. And we don't have much time to get all this done. And the difficult part about it is we try and do some of these things, the products are not available because you've got 92 counties plus businesses and everything else and everybody's asking for the same equipment. So, we've tried to analyze some of those things as to what some of our needs are going to be. What is the medical surgical mask? How many of those are we going to need? And, you know, when we looked at the numbers and we started calculating that, I had ordered 10,000 well, originally I had ordered 3,000 masks. And I was able to get those through Mary Walker at the Tourism Bureau, who had a contact and was able to get them. But we knew the 3,000 wouldn't work, so we kept working on sources and trying to get the price down at a reasonable price for these items. And so, I was finally able, through the court system, to ma, able to make contact with folks and so I had 10,000 on order. When we started running the numbers as to what do we think we were going to need just in Wayne County to be able to do here and along with the court system, that number grew from 10,000 up to at least 300,000 surgical masks we'll probably need within the rest of the 2020 year to comply with everything that we're going to have to comply with. At the same time, several folks have been meeting through the Chamber of Commerce and through EDC about a loan program that we were doing. And I'll talk in a minute about the CARE Act of what we thought we might be able to do. And money's been raised within the community and also looking at the revolving loan fund, which I'm sure Jeff will talk about in a little bit here. And through the city's revolving loan fund is how we can help those small businesses here to keep them up and running so we don't lose these small businesses. So, all of that's going on at the same time. I chatted with our Secretary Beth Fields, who are a good administrative assistant. We can't live without her. And talked to her about working with Steve and I now with all this paperwork that we have downloaded. To give you an idea of how much we've downloaded on my printer just at home, I ran through the whole toner and had to go out and buy a whole new toner, just downloading COVID stuff on there so we could read it and see what they're requiring for us to do and have available. And the key thing that we've looked at is to keep our people, when we bring them back to work, safe and so they don't get sick. And we've tried to talk to the different departments of what they want. The sneeze guards is something that we've been working on. We got some samples in. We're looking in the auditor's office and the treasurer's office and the recorder's office, putting a, a full-scale plexiglass area in there. And we're looking at doing that and getting that custom built for those folks in that area. So, we're, we're getting different quotes and we're looking at different ideas that folks have out there. At the same time, in talking with my vendor last night about nine o'clock, he says, Ken, supplies are running along here. And he says, you need to get onto this if you want it. And he said, right now I can supply you, but next week I may not be able to because everybody's ordering all this. So, that's where we are and at this time on, on the masks, I, I currently have 375,000 masks on order for us coming in over the 25th, 1st of June and the 8th are the committed times at this point. Those committed times definitely are not cast in stone. They change all the time. The first order though, will be here next week. So, that one is on schedule. What we will be doing in the guidelines, when we bring people back, as you know, we're bringing the highway department back on the 26th. We'll be bringing all of our folks in the administration court back on June the 15th. For the next two weeks, we'll still do appointments and everything, just like we're doing currently at this time. And then we'll open up in July for the facility. We'll have everything in place at that time. We'll have instructions, not only for our employees, but we'll have guidelines on health that they need to do. We're working on a special sheet with Kim Klausser out of HR. And we've been collecting questions from employees. We're going to have just a question and answer sheet also of a lot of the questions we think that we're going to run into as people come back. We have those over 60, 65 years of age. We know we're going to get questions into those areas. We find people address COVID-19. Some people, eh, they just don't really care. They're not going to wear a mask, not going to do this, I'm not going to get sick. You have those that want to kind of comply with what we recommend that they do in wearing masks. Then you have those folks that really are scared of all of it. So, those are all the things that we're trying to deal with to be able to bring everybody back. And I, and I asked Jeff and he put it on the agenda so we can just have some general discussion as we're looking at all the different items that we might need to do and any suggestions or ideas that you folks might have. We're looking at the hand sanitizers, the other PPE equipment. You may or may not be aware yet of the CARE Act and the funding that has been made available to Wayne County. We have over 2.1 million that has been made available to us. City of Richmond received 1.4 something million available. However, there are restrictions on what we can spend those funds for. And all of it is reimbursable. And so, we have to spend the money and then fill out the forms and I have to sign off on them. And as the attorneys told me yesterday, said be very careful if you have the documentation because when you sign that, you've signed it that everything's up to date on that. So, we'll make sure we have documentation in place for those items that we buy. And they will be in larger quantities that we'll be looking at and there will be larger expenditures as we go along. So, that quickly will tell you kind of where we are, what we're thinking about and, and what we're doing.
Okay.
All right.
Coming up for air?
Well, it's just, I tell you, it's been a lot. I tell you, and that's just a short synopsis of what we've been working on at this time. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Let's talk a little bit more about the CARES Act. You all got some information about that. I know at least Bob Chamnus and I were able to, to watch a YouTube presentation by the Association of Indiana Counties. And they went into some detail. Was anybody else able to catch that?
I couldn't, I couldn't get it to come up.
Okay. So, there, it, it was recorded and it should be available through the, the AIC website if you want to look back for that. But in a nutshell, we were told that the commissioners are in charge of, of the CARES Act dollars. It's just north of 2.1 million for the county. We do have a, a set of criteria of what we can spend that on. Sent that out to all of you. I've got a couple of copies here if, if any of you need it. But that came from the federal government. And the channel was the federal government gave the state of Indiana, I want to say it was $2.6 billion.
A lot of money.
In the billions. And the governor took 300 million of that allocation and chose to pass it down to the local governments, counties, cities and towns. So, every, every city or town in Wayne County has their own allocation. Obviously, it's, it's based
On population.
Some, some ratio of population. So, we're at, at 2.1 million. The city is 1.4
Something, yeah.
Something million. Centerville is like 85,000. Cambridge and Hagerstown are in the 50,000 range somewhere.
84.
And it goes down from there to, you know, based on population. But every, every incorporated city or town got an allocation based on population. And I think, I think I told you, Gary, that economy got $5,400, something like that. So
But they still have to apply for that, right?
Well, no.
You make, you make the expenditure for reimbursement.
You have to spend it and then apply for reimbursement. Now, here's the tricky part. We have this list of what it can be spent on that came from the federal government. But the state has modified that list. And I haven't seen yet a clear cut, these are the exact changes. But one of those things that, that was discussed at the AIC meeting was the feds have a provision for providing grants to small businesses to help them get through this COVID issue. And so, we were looking at that. But AIC says that that is not currently an approved expenditure by the state, by the governor's office. So, we've made some contacts there. Ken, as you know, is, is on the, the board of both the AIC and the Commissioners Association. So, he's working that angle. I've talked to Senator Rotz and he's, he's looking at that and talking to people in the governor's office. So, these things can change. They're fluid. We'll, we'll find out. What we can do, which in my opinion is closely related apparently, and for anything we might contemplate, I think we need to check it out and make sure that it's something we can be reimbursed for. But what AIC believes we can be reimbursed for, and I talked directly to David Bodorff, the director, is that we can purchase PPE, we can purchase masks and gloves and cleanser, hand sanitizer, those kind of things, even to the point of signage about social distancing and those even to the point of signage about social distancing and those kinds of things. And we can pass that along to small businesses. And that could become a part of our loan program, which we'll talk about more in a few minutes. But by buying in bulk, and you know, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of masks at a time, hundreds of gallons of hand sanitizer at a time, where a, a small business might try to buy one gallon of hand sanitizer. We're buying hundreds of gallons. And so we can get a significant price reduction. And we can, then when we give those to the small businesses, obviously, they in essence benefit from that, from that price reduction by buying in bulk. So there are some, some other opportunities that the state has put in place to purchase at a state level for small businesses, some, some of those same items. But the people we've talked to who've tried that have been unsuccessful in actually getting anything. So as Ken alluded to, there are still challenges in the supply chain. Everything's not readily available. And so to some extent, it's kind of who you know and what kind of relationship you might have.
And that has really played very well. And, and we're working very closely with the mayor.
Working with us as well, who obviously from Phillips has some contacts in the supply chain. So, so we're working all those angles. Nothing is, is cast in stone yet. So we need to work through this as quickly as possible. But we want to keep you up to date. And again, my, my caution to Ken is if we buy these things and we don't find out for two or three months that somebody in Indianapolis has, has disallowed it and is not going to reimburse us for one reason or another, then we already have it, we've probably already used it. And so we're going to have to come up with, with the cost of that. And so even though the commissioners are completely in charge of this CARES Act program, the, the idea that, that council doesn't need to be a part of it, I think we need to work through that and continue to, to work as a team like we have through this whole process. So, and that includes working with, with the mayor and the city and the city council.
Because we were able to source, through my source, 80,000 masks for the city. So, you know, we've worked together before on this, and this we're working together with. And as we'll talk further, as Jeff mentioned, you know, the fact that we thought we could give the masks, because you have roughly a couple of thousand businesses here in town. We got a couple of hundred restaurants, which all are needing, needing masks. If you look at the information we received from Mary Ann on Purdue, on the restrictions and that they're putting in place for the fair that they're having this year, they're going to require a lot of stuff. And everybody seems to look at us and say, hey pals, I need, well, one company say, hey pals, I need 40,000 of these. And I said, oh, I don't have 40,000 of those. So they kind of look at us to provide this. And so we're working very hard to find the different sources. And, and we're getting sources on there. And, and we've been able to negotiate some prices and, and get the numbers down. I'm pleased with what I've been able to do. And even though there's money there to reimburse this, it's still taxpayers' dollars. So I'm trying to get the best price I can in especially on masks. And a lot of this stuff, as Jeff said, you know, it goes from here and way up to here. So you have to be very careful to make sure that the price you're paying is at least what the current market price is.
Well, the, the other side of this is that 2.1 million dollars sounds like a lot of money. But there's a lot of need out there. And particularly if we go outside of Wayne County government, I, I think it would be, I don't think there's probably enough need for Wayne County government to spend 2.1 million dollars effectively and efficiently. And that's why I think it makes sense to look to, how can we help businesses get back in operation and, and do that safely? But even then, we're going to have to prioritize. These are the things we're able to do within this 2.1 million dollar price tag. And, and prioritize those and take the most important things first. And obviously, our charge, first of all, is to make sure that our employees and our customers, as they come into the building, are safe and secure. And that, that needs to be our first priority. But after that, then we need to look at what can we do to help Wayne County's economy get rolling again. So I think that's, that's what we're looking at. And we're, we're really looking to you all to kind of endorse that, that program. Again, even though this particular program is set up by the feds and the state so that the commissioners have the responsibility to implement a plan and sign off on that. Fully recognize that, but also caution.
And I'm, I'm very cognizant of that. That it's just like as we've looked at what we would like to do with small business out there to be able to give them some of these supplies. I have questions over there right now in the governor's office. I want, I want to know, this is what I want to do, I want to know if I can do it. I know I can do it in the county with our people and the PPE. But I want to know for sure, can I give that? Because we'll be spending considerable dollars. And I have to sign off on that, that I feel that this, or I feel this is definitely a reimbursable expense. And they could come back and say, ah, you got to pay for it. And that's why we need everybody on, in case something like that would happen. And I want to get it in writing. So three months from now, when they say, oh, well, no, no, we're not going to approve that expense. Yeah.
I think there's an op-
I have a question.
Go ahead, Chris.
Once we find out the details and we all know what it is, would the big chance that we'd have like a meeting with all of the governmental bodies of Wayne County? If we kind of the leadership on that thing and find out exactly what this can be spent on, while people like Centerville, Cambridge, East Towne City, and so, and so forth, are running, and all of them, or what, what can we spend that on would be very helpful to those governmental bodies also.
Yeah, Chris, on, on some of the details like this one, whether I can definitely give it to small businesses, I have no problem in passing that on to those folks. They've all received so far the same material that we've got on what is currently available. But the problem is, when you define it, what does that really mean? You know, they'll say, PPE equipment, okay. Exactly what do you consider reimbursable in PPE? Is that only surgical masks? Is that surgical masks? Is that hand sanitizer? You know, is that goggles? Is that a big shield? Is that a uniform? Is that a hazmat? What all do you consider PPE equipment? I know what I might consider, but I don't know what. And it's the Indiana Finance Authority that's going to be running this. So they've run in right now with so many counties already calling in that they're setting up a separate site where now you have to send your question into this site and then they'll get back to you with an answer. Well, the question is, how quicker than get it back? Because what I need to do is just like on stuff that we're buying on these masks, I have to make that decision now or I'm not going to get them. It takes three weeks for a container usually out of China to get here. And so, yeah.
I felt like at some point, they're going to have a list of exactly what their intentions are.
Yeah, well, don't count on that, Chris.
We should understand, once we understand that list, I, I think we might at least give them a chance to sit down and listen to what we found out. And they can hit their own-
Yeah, we can do that.
We can absolutely do that, Chris. I, I agree with you that we should share that first in written form, but be willing-
Chris, you need to know right now that, that list is one-page, single-spaced with different items that they have on there. And you can go down through there and almost every one, you need more clarification on it. And that's what we're working to get. And it will come, but it will take a little time.
Yes, yes, Bob, let's go to Bob, please.
Yes, I just want to remind everybody, there's 15 different divisions, 15 different towns or corporations that'll be receiving funds too. So it's not like Wayne County is the sole person
Correct.
involved with this. It needs to be a coordinated effort between all towns and cities.
I think we're agreeing with you, Bob.
I, I think a key here would be the power in purchasing is where the organization comes in. And even schools are in the same position. So if we could leverage the dollars that we know that are going to all these separate entities and part of that organization, you know, we've already talked about individual gallon versus a semi-load and what that cost is and how much more can we leverage, leverage those dollars? I, I think there's an opportunity as we do talk that we can include other entities that could benefit.
And just like we, we mentioned earlier, the town of Economy has 5,400 dollars. Well, obviously, they're not going to buy a truckload of masks. So if, if, if we can pool those purchases so that they can get the hundreds of masks that they might need at the same price that a purchaser of a truckload is going to give, then we can save everybody money and extend the reach of these dollars.
I feel like it's really important that we get clarified what can be purchased with this money. Because $5,000 would, if Economy had to pay it out of their pocket and not get reimbursed, it'd be pretty rough on them.
Absolutely.
Right. Especially a small town like that, so.
Absolutely.
Well, we could probably take that in some cases. We could turn your five into 50,000 dollars with our purchase, yeah.
Okay, Beth, go ahead.
When I was reading through all those guidelines, I saw that you can give it for personnel costs. Do we have any outstanding personnel costs that are directly related to COVID? Like from the health center, things like that, that we need to cover with some of that?
We probably have some.
Minor at this point.
But, but it's not dramatic. So for example, if, if a, if a food inspector has, has been converted to a person who does contact tracing for part of the day, then the way I read that, we could track those hours and be reimbursed for that contact tracing of somebody who doesn't ordinarily do that. If they ordn-, if, if they do that as a matter of course in their job, that's their job, then no, we can't be reimbursed.
Also on that, Beth, one of the things that we were discussing today as we're looking at the courts and what the requirements are going to be there. I, I told Steve, we got about halfway through that. And I said, well, very frankly, we're going to have to hire a full-time person or contract somehow with somebody just to do what's going to be required in the court side. So that would be reimbursable to us to do the cleaning that they're going to require. Yeah.
Those kinds of things that, that we won't be able to do with our existing staff.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we allocate stronger for that stuff.
Absolutely.
We're watching all of it, Beth, very closely. Beth Fields is doing an excellent job in taking any claim we have and they're spatially marked COVID-19. And Kimberly is tracking all that. And we're keeping track of all of our expenditures that we have and-
So far, in tracking a, a COVID-related purchase, the total dollar amount is about $100,000 at this point.
Right.
Goes back to, to early March when we started, started tracking that. Okay.
That's good.
Other questions about the CARES Act? If not, let's, let's move on to the small business loan program, Kenny.
Okay, that, that's fine. I know Val's here. I did hand out to you, this is one of the things we're looking at. This is a social distancing thing. And this is a decal. I have 100 of these on, or 1,000, excuse me, I have 1,000 of these on order right now. And this is social distancing. We'll be giving these to folks and says, thank you for social distancing. Please, what did I put there? Please stand six feet apart. It has the county logo on there. We'll be giving those out to folks to be able to put on their floor and, and, and different things on there. And this is one that our good friend, former councilman Peter Sulewski, that he uses in, in his business. And so we thought that would be good on here. So that's just one of the things we're looking at that we could do. So, okay, so Val, where's Val? I know she's here.
Val is back in fact. Let me, let me give you each a copy of this. Sorry, guys, I don't have this sent out to you, but I will, I'll, I'll send it out tomorrow. So there is a, a group that Valerie Schaefer and I and Melissa Vance and just, there's probably what, a dozen people on this, this group that are talking through, what can we do to help relaunch businesses and to try to make them successful? And so obviously, one of the things we've been talking about for the last couple of meetings is how do we, can you give one to Ron and one to Ken? This is just a draft. It's, it's, remember, we have a structure already in place with a Wayne County revolving loan fund. And that we intend to be the vehicle for this program. We did apply to Okra for a grant of $250,000 that would be used as grant dollars for small businesses. We were unsuccessful in that application, but the city of Richmond did receive a grant and they're working through their Center City Development Corporation to, to distribute those dollars to their businesses in downtown, in the downtown area. Essentially, what we're talking about, and, and this would be handled through the board of the revolving loan fund, the commissioners are looking at modifying. Did they already adopt something? Or are they going to do that today or tonight or to modify?
There's only one up in here.
Well, there's two of them on the phone, I think, or at least Denny was on, I thought.
I'm on too.
And Mary Ann's on too. Denny, are you on there?
Yeah, they're both on, yeah.
Dennis Burns or me?
Yeah, Jack, yes, I'm on.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So, so the outline that we've come up with after several iterations is that we would have a loan program for small business, up to $25,000 for things like rent, utilities, supplies, equipment, insurance, inventory, labor costs, et cetera, for reopening a locally-owned business. The owners would have to live in Wayne County. The business physically located in Wayne County, subject to payment of Wayne County taxes. No more than 50 employees as of March 1st of 2020. And they must meet SBA eligibility criteria. We added that, and I'll be honest, I, I don't know all the details of the SBA eligibility criteria. So we'll, we're working to define that. And then the concept would be to have a 0% loan to those applicants who are selected. Those payments would be deferred for six months and then up to 54 months then, once they start repayment, to repay the principal. The next pages is a proposed application form. And Valerie is working to have that application hosted on the EDC website. We're still trying to work through who that application, completed application would go to. Who is the person to be contacted if a applicant has questions about filling out the form and those kinds of things? Scott, Scott, what's Scott's name?
Underwood.
Sorry, Scott. Scott Underwood, who works at the local office of the Small Business Development Center, has agreed to review some of these documents to kind of do the first round of qualifications, if you will, to see that, that each applicant- if you will, to see that each applicant meets the minimum requirements and has submitted all the documentation that we're asking for. We have three bankers on the revolving loan fund board, and we've had them helping us with review that documentation that's not too onerous, but it is enough information to allow a reasonable decision to be made with some expectation that this business would be able to pay back those funds over time. Again, the other component of this, originally, we had discussed the possibility of a grant as part of this process that might allow somebody to not even ask for a loan if they could get 3,000 or 5,000 as a grant, and combining that potentially with a grant of personal protective equipment and cleaning supplies that are so expensive right now and so hard to come by. So all of those pieces, we hope to be able to intermesh, to work together. At this point, the only thing that we feel is a proposal to come to you right now is the actual loan program. The loans, the funding for the loans, the loan board, the revolving loan board has talked in terms of making $250,000 available in existing funds controlled by the revolving loan fund board. We're also talking about, Valerie, you want to talk about your conversations with your board on using some, potentially some consolidated edit money?
Yes, at my board meeting last week, we talked about the need for this type of loan fund and the fact that consolidated edit dollars would be a viable use. I came to the commissioners just back in, I think it was February, and approved some guidelines for priorities for 2020 of consolidated edit spending. So the board is very supportive of adding this disaster loan program to priority for 2020. We didn't talk about a specific amount, but I was thinking around $250,000 could be allocated from consolidated edit to match what the loan fund board is willing to contribute from their existing loan fund dollars.
So if that comes to fruition, that would make $500,000 available. We've also talked to the city of Richmond, and we talked at our previous meeting about the possibility of the city of Richmond and Wayne County making some of our own edit dollars, Wayne County edit, city of Richmond edit, as opposed to consolidated edit, available. The city, the last time I talked to the mayor, he was, thought that $150,000 would be available. My suggestion would be that we would match that, at least consider 150,000 of Wayne County edit. So if we did all of those things, that would make a total of $800,000 available, which is a significant dollar amount. If you look across the state, there are dozens probably of similar programs that are being stood up, and most of them don't have nearly that level of resources available. Indianapolis obviously does and has much more than we would have, but when their number three million or something along those lines?
They were trying to raise five. I think they raised three last time I saw. The next largest fund is Bloomington has set aside $2.5 million for disaster loans for their small businesses. Other than that, it really ranges from across the state, anywhere from 50,000 to 500,000. So I think our ability to potentially raise 800,000 could make a significant impact to in the success rate of our small businesses being able to remain viable after COVID-19.
There also is a possibility, particularly since we already applied to OKRA for some funding, that if other dollars come onstream with OKRA, that we may be back in the mix to receive some of those funds. The downside to their program is it has, it will have many more restrictions than the dollars that we will have available. For example, this has to preserve the jobs of, or 51% or more of the jobs preserved have to be held by low to moderate income workers. So that's, number one, it's a challenge to document that. Number two, it's a challenge to meet that guideline depending on what kind of business you operate and how you operate. So at any rate.
Just before the OKRA grant, Jeff?
Correct, correct. We do not currently contemplate any kind of wage guidelines for this. They have to be, to demonstrate that they have been impacted negatively by the coronavirus, and they have to provide the information that we've talked about. We want to tie some kind of ability to repay the loan to the amount that the loan might be up to $25,000. So if there, if a business was in operation all of 2019 and their revenue stream through that scoring process was only adequate to pay back a $10,000 loan, then at least at the moment, that's what we're contemplating. We want to try to get them back to the level that they were at pre-coronavirus, and obviously...
I did not hear the stipulation that they would be for profit?
That is, yes, that is part of the...
Would not consider nonprofits because that would be outside the EDC's?
That is, that is one of the criteria.
For profit, good.
For profit, correct.
Jeff, this is Denny.
Yes.
Did the, will the revolving loan committee be expanded to include a member of the city since they would be contributing 150,000 to this fund?
That has not been determined yet, and the other thing we'll need to consider, Denny, is who is actually going to score these applications? Is it going to be the board itself? Are we going to, is the board going to delegate that authority to some other group? The city, for example, delegated their authority in this to the Center City Development Corporation to actually run the program. So they applied for a grant.
Would it be appropriate, would we consider doing that to the SBDC?
You know, the SBDC in Wayne County is Scott, so I don't, I don't know that that's even possible, but that we can, we can explore all of those options. I know, I would say for, from Denny's, the chair of the revolving loan fund and the, typically, there are one or two or three applications a year, and sometimes there aren't any in a year, that come to the revolving loan fund board for review and a decision. So we're thinking potentially there would be 100 or more applications, maybe significantly more than that. That, and so there's not really a good mechanism at this point to review that many. That's why we're still exploring how we would score this. And I'll tell you that some folks on the board recommend that we have a first-come, first-served kind of application process, just because of the volume. And once you have applications for all of your resources, then you would start a waiting list, I suppose. We haven't decided on the process yet. The application, or the proposed application is in that packet that I gave you, and I'll send out to the rest of you. We do have, Denny called a meeting of the revolving loan fund board, a teleconference for next week, so that group will start looking at options there of how to actually implement if there are dollars available to implement a program. So that brings me back full circle to why we need to discuss this tonight, and that is, number one, if the EDC board and the commissioners agree that we want to look at $250,000 of consolidated edit going into this program, then we would need to make a transfer into, probably create a line item for this and make a transfer to make that money available. It's already appropriated, but it's not in a line item that would probably work for this. The second is, if we're going to contemplate a $150,000 or any number for that matter, contribution from the Wayne County Edit Fund into this loan fund, then that would need to be an additional appropriation because at this point, we appropriated $100,000 to the commissioners at the beginning of the year, and they've spent about half of that. So there's less than $50,000, as I recall off the top of my head, in that, appropriated dollars in that fund at the moment. So at this point, I'll open it to you for questions, comments, recommendations.
So a timeline is what, what are you thinking on that?
We are hoping that in the next two weeks or so, we'll be able to have decisions on all of this and have the application available on the website of the EDC and some kind of marketing plan in place to get that information out very broadly across the county that this is available. And again, we can do that with just the $250,000 that the revolving loan fund board has been talking about. Our preference is that that's not enough money to meet the need, and we should look at additional resources. I will tell you that we're also talking to some private sources of funding to see if we might expand that pool a little bit beyond that 800,000, and we should probably also suggest that perhaps the need will be greater than we've thought up to this point. There may be additional resources available, one from the CARES Act, that the request has already gone into the governor's office to allow the grant program for small business to be an additional tool for us, but also from other sources, and we may decide at some point that we need additional, to put additional county, city, EDC resources into the mix going forward, you know, six months from now.
Do you anticipate allowing?
Yes, I have a board, not a viable source of funding.
I'm sorry, Beth, you had a question, and then Mary Ann had a question.
Okay, my question is just, will you be excluding people who already have like the PPP loan or anything like that, or is it just based on the, in aftermath?
We have not yet determined that. The PPE essentially, or PPP, PPP.
PPP, I'm sorry.
The PPP program, as I understand it, was essentially to try to keep people off of the unemployment rolls, and so the, most of the money was to keep people employed even if the business was closed and they weren't, you know, doing their regular job somehow. Maybe they were just cleaning or doing inventory or what have you. And so that's going to expire in another...
End of June.
Month or two, month or so. So we're, at this point, we're not thinking that that would automatically disqualify somebody. We had, we had had that conversation before, but we thought it made more sense to base it on current need and their ability to demonstrate that this is what we need going forward. Now, Mrs. Butters had a question or a comment?
I had heard that the Egg Board might be stepping up to contribute a bit longer in option.
We have, it is, and that's one of the private sector sources that we have been in conversation with.
That's a possibility as well.
Absolutely. Mr. Cross?
The resolution that I prepared for the commissioners even included sole proprietorships. That doesn't seem to be evident in the documents I'm looking at here, but is that just something that...
Up to 50 employees, from the way we're thinking, includes one employee, but...
So that would just be a factor that would weigh into, A, the amount of the loan, and B, viability of the organization?
Correct, correct. So if, from a legal perspective, we're, there needs to be some different language that separates a sole proprietorship from a company with one employee.
Well, a sole proprietorship's not going to be able to give you a certificate of good standing from the Secretary of State.
Well, that's...
For that matter, neither is a partnership, since partnerships don't register. So there's some fine tuning in the process.
And we're open to that, and there's not, other than you, that, you know, that we haven't explored all of the legal issues of the way this is drafted. So we want you to review.
One thing to keep in mind, I don't know that you're going to need all 800,000 or whatever the number, the aggregate number we've bandied around at one time. And I think the urgency of the need is such that a prolonged application analysis process is going to be self-defeating to the ultimate purpose of the program. So I think you're in a gambling mode, whether you like it or not, and if you're going to defer repayment for six months, we're going to be latter part of the year before we even have a feel for, A, whether it's been successful, and B, whether the loan is going to be repaid. So there are some things in here. The commissioners' resolution that I prepared had a sunset on this of December 31st, 2020, and that may or may not work, and it's something we need to think about.
But it could be extended.
I prepared that, yeah, they can extend it, yeah. I prepared that without having seen this, and it's just more, and I purposely told the commissioners last week, and they agreed that they wanted it to be general, they want the devilish details to be worked out by the revolving loan fund folks or whatever organization is going to be on the front lines implementing the approach.
And of course...
But it is needed, and I think sooner the better.
And certainly, Denny, as the chair of the revolving loan fund board, keeps the commissioners in that loop of everything that's going on and the ability to raise any red flags from the commissioners' perspective that might come up.
Things that I'm starting, the clocks are ticking, the wheels are turning, and I, just generating modest documentation for the transactions is going to take time.
Exactly.
And we can try to dumb it down to where one size almost fits all, but that comes at a risk.
It does, and I think it's very likely that all of this money will not be repaid, which is the case with...
Well, that is an unprecedented with the revolving loan...
That's the nature of the revolving loan fund, is kind of the lender of last resort. And that's kind of where we're at with this, with this pandemic, is a lot of small businesses are kind of on their last legs, and if we don't inject some resources in the coming weeks, a month at least, we're going to lose a significant number, and we want to try to mitigate that as best we can while still recognizing that there's some responsibility to make sure that there's some significant likelihood that most of them will be able to repay these loans. So it's certainly a balancing act, as the operation of a revolving loan fund of this type has always been. So was there anybody else that had questions or comments? Bob?
Jeff.
Or Chris? Okay, Chris, go ahead.
I don't know about Bob's test, but I have a lot of this that's very wrong. I don't know if you summarized what he said, or if he's in the oven or not.
I can summarize for you, Chris, by saying that Ron believes that there are some issues that are not addressed by this outline that I will send you, and that as the legal counsel to the revolving loan fund board, he's going to be diligent in working with us to make sure that we address some of those issues and have, end up with a better, a better document.
Gotcha. Thank you. Yep.
Some of the issues that I did not hear as a criteria was that they not be in arrears on their property tax, on their business personal property tax, in order to be eligible.
There, when I send this to you... There, when I send this to you, you can see everything that's included. All of those things that you've mentioned are included. At some level, there's a report that some of the bankers have recommended that we use that gets at all of those issues of having any leans against the properties or bankruptcies or debts or those kinds of things, owing money to the state, not being in good standing with the state. So those issues are addressed, I just didn't mention them. There's four pages of stuff here that I will send to you. Anything else?
I don't think it mentions in here if they filed a personal property tax return or not. If they haven't filed a personal property tax return, then I'm not sure they should be eligible. That's certainly up to the people who review this, but, you know.
Would you be one of the people who reviews this?
I would consider it.
I will tell you that the council has two appointments to this revolving loan fund board. I am one of them, I took Pete Zaleski's place, but we have a vacancy, and I think you would make a wonderful decision to this board. You have so much experience because you've been on the city's revolving loan fund board for, what, 20 years?
Thirty-some years.
Thirty years, okay. Well, he started, what, as a project?
A sixth grader.
In your high school. Okay, so I think, it sounds like we just, Denny, we just added a member of the board, so that's a positive.
Woo-hoo!
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Tuesday, 9:30.
Yes.
Or 8:30, excuse me.
There's a teleconference on Tuesday morning, we'll send you the information.
Are the commissioners ready to entertain the motion, or the resolution that I prepared? Or would you like me to kind of give you a quick summary?
Why don't you give a quick summary and make sure, Denny and Mary Ann, that you can hear, and I'm going to move the microphone over to Ron.
So that you can hear.
There we go. In specific honor of you, Mary Ann, I'm going to delete most of the whereas clauses.
Thank you. Just say all the predicates as advertiseded.
And read only the last one, which says, whereas this board, meaning the board of commissioners, finds such short-term modifications in the revolving loan fund board's loan evaluated criteria for purposes of making such loans more readily available to qualifying businesses parent, including sole proprietorships, those parent located in the county, is an appropriate function of the economic development revolving loan fund. Therefore, this board wishes to evidence its support for such an initiative by adoption of the following resolution. Therefore, be resolved, one, the board endorses the above described initiative that is intended to make economic development revolving loan fund loans more readily available to county businesses in accordance with such modified loan application evaluated criteria as might thereafter be developed by the RLF board. Such modified criteria may, not must, may include, but are not necessarily limited to, A, a reduction of the interest rate charged on any such loans. Obviously, the proposal affects that since our minimum interest rate is 3% currently in the.
Correct.
Second, a lowering of the ratio of job retention and/or creation criteria heretofore used as a basis in part for determining the maximum principal loan amount that an applicant might obtain from the economic development revolving loan fund, and/or such other modifications as the RLF board might establish, but provided always that the loan application review process reasonably ensures both pre-COVID-19 viability of the business operations as well as post-COVID-19 prospective ability of the loan applicant to reopen and/or restore its operational levels to as near normal levels as prevailed prior to the COVID-19 health emergency. Then finally, be resolved, the representatives of the RLF board shall report to this board, board of commissioners, on an approximate monthly basis beginning in June as to the development of its criteria and the level of loan applications and RLF board actions with respect to the approval thereof, and such other pertinent matters that should come before the board. And as I indicate, be it further resolved with endorsement and authority for the RLF board to make actions contemplated by this resolution shall end at midnight December 31, 2020, unless earlier terminated or extended by subsequent action of the board.
Mary Ann or Denny, do you have any question? Mary Ann moved for approval.
Would you have to do that, Denny?
No, go ahead, I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Field, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Aye.
Mr. Past?
Aye. Resolution passes.
Okay, we'll defer signatures until everybody's present, but there you have the endorsement.
All right, thank you. With respect to the consolidated edit dollars contemplated and the Wayne County edit dollars contemplated, Val, when is your board going to discuss that at the June 1 meeting? One possibility to speed this along would be to, for us to adopt a motion to transfer those dollars to the revolving loan fund if endorsed by the EDC board and commissioners. We wouldn't have to, we will meet on the 3rd after they meet on the 1st, but whatever your pleasure is there. The other thing is to start, to start the process, would you all concur that we should go ahead and advertise a, an additional appropriation of consolidated, or of Wayne County Edit of some amount? And the number that we've been talking about is $150,000, but that obviously is open to the council's wishes.
Would that be something we'd need to do now, or as this program gets started? If we need to do that then?
Edit is not, edit is not a property tax, so that does not require a public hearing? Is that an advertisement?
I believe that's correct. It does, I think the additional appropriation would have to be reported to DLGF, but doesn't require their approval.
Correct.
Okay, so we could do that at any meeting without advertisement and without a public hearing?
And begs another question that may require some input from various stakeholders, council, commissioners, and that is, are the funds that are being considered for putting in some repository account all going to be put there collectively, or is there going to be a last participant, a priority of participation? Are the first of the exposure funds going to be the 200,000 or so, or 250,000 that the board of revolving loan fund might?
The intention is that those dollars would be tracked in some fashion. For example, the city of Richmond's contribution, the conversation has been that that would only be used within the city of Richmond, so business within the city of Richmond. Beyond that, we've talked, and again, no final determination has been made, but we've talked about where possible that we would share the risk and then also share the repayment to the extent there is repayment.
People need to understand that, I would say, the majority or a significant component of the borrowers for the county revolving loan fund are in fact businesses located within the city of Richmond.
Correct.
I mean, it's not mutually exclusive jurisdictions of the two.
So I think we're, that's why that particular pot of money would probably be the only one that would be restricted geographically, and the others.
At least just states, I don't have answers to.
Right. And we have thought of them and discussed them, and the intention, I believe, and Val, feel free to jump in, but the intention is, to the extent possible, to share, to share the risk and to, to share the revenue as it comes back in for those businesses that repay their loans, that those would then go back to their source. So consolidated edit.
I don't want to Kim's job board, but I think it's almost begging for the creation of this totally separate account.
I think she agrees with you from the look on her face and nods of her head.
A lot easier.
I don't know about easier, but at least.
At least track it.
And they keep track of the revolving loan fund dollars anyway, so they've already got a firm grasp of that element, and we could just add additional funds to track each of those from their source.
Another alternative would be at the end, as the repayments are coming in, that they would then roll over to something else that's, that would be created, rather than go back to the four parties, and that might be something that's a little more simple to manage.
And that certainly is possible. The discussion up to this point has been that it would go back to the original source. And I think particularly the city and the EDC have asked that question, that will, will we get the money back?
I don't think the intention is to create a parallel entity that's going to exist indefinitely.
With the revolving loan fund, correct.
With, parallel with the actual two revolving, oh, two revolving, revolving loan funds of cities.
And the counties.
That we've had since 1989.
Correct.
So, I mean, I think there's that temporal aspect of what's contemplated.
But you're right, it could.
It could roll into another.
It could go into something entirely different.
And where the need can manifest itself can be continuing. We, you know, what would happen if there is a second round, if it fires, it fall, or whatever, you can see another shutdown.
So everybody understands that the current mission of the revolving loan fund is to help start new businesses that aren't able to adequately finance that startup or that growth from private sources. So this is a significantly different departure in that we're looking at existing businesses and trying to help recapitalize them to some extent to be able to start up again after the closures. So in terms of the Wayne County Edit, what is your pleasure? Do you want to go ahead and take some steps with that? In fact, if we don't have to, if we don't have to advertise or have a public hearing, we could actually go ahead and take action on an additional appropriation tonight?
You can, I mean, I don't know.
$150,000 to me?
Comfortable with council?
Council? Again, I know we're, there are still some open questions, but timing is important to get this started as quickly as we can. Is that something you want to do, or do you want to wait and see? Again, we can always start the application process with the money that already exists in the revolving loan fund, which is the approval of the loan fund board, and we can add to that as we're able. But the sooner, the sooner we have some clear definition to this program, the better.
I think the application process should start and see how many people we have apply for. Then we know that we're willing to put the money in there if necessary.
Do we know that?
Well, I think for what we're part of here, we probably are, but so.
So, I mean, that's the key. Are we, are we going to launch a program and say there's $250,000? Or are we going to launch a program and say that there's, there's more than that? So it's, again, it's up to you, we can do it however you're comfortable.
Might I suggest you might want to give some deference to the revolving loan fund board itself and maybe allow them to meet Tuesday and then take this issue up. I hate to put it off, but at least two, two weeks later to your June meeting.
We can do that. The loan fund board did take a vote to pursue this, and the number of 250,000 was part of that discussion, but we, it won't hurt anything to wait until Tuesday, but again, we won't meet again then until June the 3rd.
Sheriff, what did Ron say, I could hear Ron?
Ron said that perhaps we should wait to see what the revolving loan fund board does at their meeting next Tuesday.
I would be inclined to agree with that. I'm for doing this, but I'd be inclined to wish not to.
Okay, and again, don't forget Ron's previous comments that this can't drag on forever, or we're going to lose a bunch of the businesses that we hope to help. So Valerie would like to say something else. Go ahead, Val.
I would just like to encourage council to really consider making the appropriation today. I am, I feel like we were already two weeks behind where we need to be in getting this loan fund initiated and dispersed and receiving the applications, and I'm worried that delaying the decision on funding will hamper the loan fund board in terms of how they're scoring applications because they're not going to know if they have $500,000 to work with or 800,000 to work with in terms of what they have to loan. So waiting to see what applications come in, I think, could be very difficult in the scoring process. And then also, I just wanted to relay my conversations with the mayor in terms of the city's contribution of $150,000 from their edit, was with the understanding that the county would be potentially matching $150,000 from their edit fund as well. So I'm afraid we won't get the full commitment from the city until we get the commitment from the county, and I know the private entity that we're talking about that might consider a contribution, it's dependent upon having all the government funding secured first. They really want to make sure that the government sources are kind of, what is moving this forward, and they are just allocating additional dollars to support it. So I don't want to put any pressure on you, but I just want.
Yeah, you do.
I just want to make sure that we're really thinking through this, and our ability to commit the dollars on the front end will lead to the success of the entire program, in my opinion.
I agree.
Do you want a motion?
Are you interested in making a motion?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, go ahead.
When you're ready.
I'm ready right now. I was ready 30 minutes ago.
$150,000 in, out of our county's debt fund available for this, what's the budget called? Small business?
Small business loan fund. And this is an additional appropriation of $150,000, correct?
A hundred and fifty thousand.
I'll second.
There's an account yet to be created.
The account number will be created by the auditor.
You want that contingency as long as Richmond, city of Richmond agrees to this 150,000 too?
That's entirely up to, up to you all.
I would prefer it was.
I think we just go ahead and do it, and in good faith, and I just.
I think we can do that. The mayor has already expressed his interest, and I don't think his comments about matching the county was in any way threatening, or, you know, it was like, we can, we can do as much as you guys are able to do.
Yeah.
Up to $150,000 was his talk. So there's a motion to do an additional appropriation of $150,000 for the Wayne County revolving loan fund and their new program for small for-profit business support. And there's a second by Mr. Smith.
Roger.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, let's call for the vote. Hearing none, let's call for the vote. Mr. Beeson.
Aye.
Mr. Chamnus.
Aye.
Mr. Gillum.
Aye.
Mrs. Leisure.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Plaster gives an emphatic aye, making us unanimous that we have appropriated an additional 150,000 for this program from the Wayne County Edit Fund.
Thank you all.
Valerie, anything else? You want to share any other good news? We haven't, haven't talked to counsel for a while since maybe your, your most recent development.
Yeah, we're very excited to be working with Element 13. This is a startup manufacturer, however, they have depth of experience in their, the investors that are coming together to start this new venture. They will be purchasing 15 and a half acres in the Midwest Industrial Park, Phase Two, just southeast of, of Blue Buffalo, with an option to purchase an additional 17 acres over the next five years. So their project is, the cost keeps increasing, of course, as, as they're getting in final estimates, but they're looking at investing roughly $18 million in this new facility with plans to employ 30 new people.
Cool.
Yeah.
Awesome. And you mentioned the, the wage the last time I heard you talk.
Yes, the starting wage will be $18, not across the board, but that's the minimum wage that they will be paying at that facility with the average wage of $20.55 per hour.
That's great.
Yeah. So it's a good project.
Questions for Valerie?
All right.
I guess not. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Valerie.
Thank you all, I appreciate your support.
Appreciate you coming in. Okay. Let's see, we talked about bids on the security system upgrade. Action items. Ken, did you, did you have anything else before we move on to action items? And Kim, you have some.
I got some small things.
Okay. Let's go to you first.
First of all, I am trying to finalize the budget letter to the elected officials and department heads, and I did not hear back from everyone, and I would just like to know with what was sent to you, are you all in agreement for me to go ahead and send that out?
Counsel, everybody okay with the, the letter?
Yeah.
Okay.
We sent to you for review.
Thank you. The only other thing that I have is, as you know, I'm trying to finish up the 2019 State Board of Accounts audit, and I have been asked if you guys approve this wording in regards to the health center leaving. They would like to put just a small blurb in the audit that states, effective May 31st, 2020, the Wayne County Community Health Center, Inc., is separating from Wayne County. Funds directly associated with the clinic will no longer be reported on the financial statements of the county.
And that's, that was the language recommended by the State Board of Accounts?
Yes.
Will no longer, funds directly related to the.
Funds directly associated with the clinic will no longer be reported to the financial statements of the county.
I don't know.
So should I change the clinic to the health center?
I would say to, to the subsequent federally qualified health center, to the successor.
And so.
Because we may have funds held in escrow for a period of time that would have been related to.
And that's the, that's the real issue, because those, those dollars might still be with the county for a considerable period of time.
A period. I would say, you know, directly related to the successor health center, whatever. Because, I mean, I think the problem is there's this impression that is some fostered in some minds, encouraged, and then just adopted, and that is it's all one and the same, it's going to be a seamless transfer. We hope it is a seamless transfer, but it's definitely not all one, it's not one and the same entity that has preexisted.
So I guess what I would recommend is that we leave it to Ron to work out the language that needs to go into that.
Gotcha.
We got an ex-con set here.
No.
Is everybody okay with that? We let Kim and Ron work out the language that goes into the, the final report from, from the State Board of Accounts? Okay.
Yeah.
Without objection, we'll, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Was that?
That's it.
Both things, okay. Ken, did you have?
I think I've got everything unless I forgot something.
Okay. Then we have, under action items, we have two things, the minutes from our last workshop, which goes back to February 19th, but we also have the Elder Bearman Maintenance Agreement. So let's go to that next. And Ron, can you either go to the podium?
Here, I'll break it over, Ron. Let's go.
Okay. So we've been talking about this maintenance agreement on the Elder Bearman Building for, for quite a while here, so Ron has a final draft.
I think we have a final draft. I mean, it's no different than what we talked about at the last, at your main meeting, I believe, and I think at that point, there was, somebody was willing to move, make a motion to go ahead and adopt, but I didn't, we didn't really have it finalized yet. I have it now in final form, same as presented, a couple of changes at the request of the EDC and the city. They want the lease term between the city as owner of the building and the EDC as tenant, which would extend arguably, it could extend through the end of 2024. They want our commitment for maintenance to be for the same term, and we talked about that briefly last time, and I've made that modification. It's, I put a qualifier in, and it's so long as the EDC remains the city's tenant, and the arrangement would terminate immediately upon the successful remark, remarking of the property to a private developer, we're not going to maintain the property for them. Secondly, we put a cap in of 52,500 per year as the maximum committed expenditure by the consolidated edit. Obviously, if something came up, we had to spend it, we'd have to deal with the situation there, but we just wanted to have some kind of structure to that level. So those are the changes. Those are actually the completions, and it's basically the same document as you have, your paragraphs, or paragraphs added.
All right. Questions for, for Ron on the Elder Bearman Maintenance Agreement?
This has been submitted, commissioner signed and approved by commissioners.
So commissioners have already approved it and signed it. Can we get a motion to move forward?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Saunders.
Second.
Agreed to the, the maintenance agreement, seconded by Mr. Gillum. Is there further discussion? If not, let's have a roll call vote. Mr. Beeson.
Abstain.
Mr. Beeson abstains. Mr. Chamnus.
Aye.
Mr. Gillum.
Aye.
Mrs. Leisure.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Plaster votes aye. Six ayes, one abstention, motion carries.
Do we have permission of those who are not present to have Beth just slash type their signature as voted, with Mr. Beeson's being noted as an abstention?
Okay. Bob, Beth, and Chris, Ron is asking if he will give your permission for, for Beth Fields to type into your signature line that you voted in favor, and your typed name.
With Chris.
With the exception of Chris.
With the exception of Chris, which would be an abstention.
In parentheses.
In parentheses.
Fine with me.
Okay. All right.
That's fine with me.
Okay. So all three of you agree, and we will move on. Okay. Approval of the February 19th workshop minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Smith.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Saunders. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signified by, oh, wait a minute, sorry, got to do a roll call vote. Mr. Beeson.
Aye.
Mr. Chamnus.
Aye.
Mr. Gillum.
Aye.
Mrs. Leisure.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Plaster votes aye. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Poust, are you?
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of February 19th?
For approval.
With our approval. Marianne, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Fields, please call the rule.
Mr. Burns.
Aye.
Mrs. Butters.
Aye.
Mrs. Poust.
Aye. Motion carried.
All right. Next up is appointments, and I would like to appoint Tony Gillum as a council representative to the revolving loan fund board. Again, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
I'll make that motion, then.
We have a motion from Mr. Saunders.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Mr. Gillum, if you didn't hear that, said that he would agree to, to serve. All in favor will please signify with an aye on the roll call vote. Mr. Beeson.
Aye.
Or a yes, either one would be adequate. Mr. Chamnus.
Aye.
Mr. Gillum.
Aye.
Mrs. Leisure.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Plaster votes aye. Motion carries. Welcome to the Wayne County Revolving Loan Fund Board, Mr. Gillum. I don't, I think we've, we've taken up enough of everyone's time. I've discussed everything that I wanted to discuss tonight.
Can I get a minute?
Can you get a minute?
Just a minute.
Okay. Mr. Marsh comes out from behind the camera.
Stop. Only be, excuse me, sorry. Eric Marsh, Whitewater Community Television. Only because there are people here who are actually on the ballot, you know that election night is normally held out at Whitewater Community Television. We invite you out. Hopefully, you get a chance to see the show, be on the in-focus election special. Because we are not having visitors out to campus on a regular basis, that is not going to be able to occur, so I did want to make known to the community that we will still be having an election special. We've gotten a special dispensation to have Commissioner Poust and Mayor Snow come out and sit in chairs that we will have socially distanced apart. Those are the seats that are normally held by Dr. Huth and Dr. Jetmore when they do the Friday Ask the Doctors program, where they've been updating the community on COVID-19. So we will have results. Hopefully, we will have a few people on Zoom. We'll open up some social media time so that the mayor and the commissioner can take some comments and, from the community, and we hope to have things back in the fall, but just wanted to let you know that upfront.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, Tim.
And you know by having Mr. Poust there that you'll be able to fill however much time you have.
Between him and the mayor, they are well able to fill whatever we have. Yes, thank you.
Good deal. Yes. Hopefully, it will be over, as Ron said, by the, by the time the, the general election comes along in November.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gillum.
I would, I know our Wayne County treasurer is in the audience, and I, I have a couple questions for her as far as collections are concerned. I think it's very important for Wayne County Council to know. Kathy, would you mind coming up?
I think she just left.
What I guess I'm interested in is how did collections go with, with property taxes actually being able to be paid as late as, as July 10th?
Yes. So as it happens, I looked, I believe it was yesterday, so I looked at last year, I think it was May 20th versus yesterday, what we took in, and we probably are an exception to the state. Ours is up.
Go figure.
Believe it or not. But we have had a lot of people, we've talked about it in the office, of course, all my staff are back. We've had lots of phone calls. The, the Dropbox has worked out great. A lot of people love it, a lot of people still are waiting for that July 10th to walk in here and pay and get that receipt anyway, but within that, it looks like Richmond is down considerably. But I think what happened, we, in trying to figure it out, a lot of people have paid spring and fall, but people out in the county have paid more. A lot of people, I think with the stimulus money, got themselves off of tax sale, which also paid a lot of delinquent taxes, but other than that, I can't explain it, but we had.
How much are we up?
I'm sorry?
How much are we up compared to last year?
I think it's a million. I, I want to say off the top of my head, 1.1 overall, but our Treasurers Association is, also as it happens, sent out an email today, well, the AIC wanted to know, could you tell them, even if you're not done yet, and some counties are not done, you know, are you up, are you down? And the majority of them are down 12%, 10%, whatever. So I just simply looked at the numbers when I had a few minutes and thought, you know, where are we really? And we pretty much have everything posted that we have that's on time, so.
One other question too, Kathy, and I appreciate you.
On the spot?
On the spot, coming up. As far as dispersments in, in June are concerned, is there a cutoff date? Do you just do it through May the 10th, or are funds received through a certain date?
Right. The way settlement goes is the cutoff is May 11th, that's the deadline this year. So what that means is anything that comes in with postmark of May 11th, we go ahead and run on May 11th, and so that can get into that spring collection by law. One thing I've done, which is kind of a gray area with the Dropbox, if it's in the Dropbox until we're done, we're going ahead and running those, because there's nothing that addresses, it's after that date, but as long as I can put it in, because I figured everyone needs the money in the spring. You know, fall will be light as well, but trying to help with that, but that's the way it works. So technically, once you have everything posted that is postmarked with a U.S. Postal Service postmark on the deadline date, that's it. And then we.
And then anything else goes into?
Goes into fall.
Fall.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. In fact, we got Walmart and a couple of others that were postmarked late, which technically they're late, but they're not penalized, so unfortunately, those will go into fall, but we tried to get the majority of the others into spring, which maybe accounts for a little bit of that 1.1 over, but, but not the whole thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good, and thank you for.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy. Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Mr. Beeson, how do you plead?
Aye.
Mr. Chamnus.
Aye.
Mr. Gillum.
Aye.
Mrs. Leisure.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Plaster votes aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
We are adjourned.